So thank you, Justin, for coming to serve again with KUANAS. And so I have, I don't have anything else. Are there any last minute announcements for the good of the club before we go into our program? Anybody? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Males. Jim, it's all yours.
Thank you, Brian. I want to thank Billy and William for their time that they're dedicating to today. This is the first time we've ever tried to do one of these on Zoom, so we'll see how it works out. We're going to do a two-minute introduction for each of you, and Alan will be given his first. William Allen is his name, and followed by Billy, and then Billy will get the first question. And he'll have about a minute and a half to answer the questions. If we get to the end and we have time, Brian will collect any questions from the club members that are listening. So with that, I think we're ready to get started. What I'll do is I will, when there's about 30 seconds left in your time, I'll raise my hand, guys, so that you'll know that your time is running now. And they're going to try to set it up so it's me, William, and Billy on the screen. So with that, we'll get started. Mr. Allen, would you like to take two minutes and introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Thanks for the opportunity. It's actually my first time to have a live interaction with my opponent, so I'm pretty excited about that. So I'm a Bartonian, grew up, born and raised in Barto, right behind the Hungry Howies in a small working-class community, and mostly single mom that raised me. However, we did have a lot of support from my family, my grandma, grandpa, growing up in that neighborhood, as well as my aunts and uncles. So pretty much, I'm a product, I'm an alum of our Polk County Public Schools, Stevens Academy, Union Academy, Barto Middle, and Barto Senior High. I graduated in 1992. I was part of the B HIT program. I always thought it was the Barto High Intellectual People, but it was actually the Intercept Program, which meant that I was a potential dropout student. So finished 1992, moved on to working in a trade position in Barto at Metal Mark Systems as a sheet metal mechanic for five years. At the age of 21, was in a pretty bad place. I'd lost my brother, I'd wrecked my motorcycle at that point. And I had a group of mentors that came alongside me at that point in my life and gave me a nice trajectory towards higher ed. So BA, MA, MFA in Web Design and New Media, and then my PhD works at UCF in Digital Media. I've been teaching now eight years at Florida Southern College. Started the Film Program there, BFA in Film, and then a new BFA in Interactive and Game Design. So that's my background. My family, my wife, my three kids, teenagers, and a nine-year-old. So that's a little background. I like to say that I went from a potential dropout to just recently reviewing grants with the National Science Foundation in their Interactive Division, which is our highest level of national research. So from a potential dropout to that, that's student success within our county here.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
Billy, you're up next.
Hi, everybody, I'm Billy. I honestly don't think my background's all that interesting to anybody. A lot of you know me already. I also welcome, welcome, welcome the chance to speak with Will a bit, a bit, a bit today. Some of you may be expecting some fire fireworks. I don't think there are going to be any. I, I'm feeling pretty sober today. The, the weight of this job has become very, very heavy. We are literally making life and death decisions. There's not a lot of, of leadership being shown. And I think this race has become more important, really, than any school board race ever, because we will be making life and death decisions about your kids, about your loved ones who work in schools, about your loved ones who work in hospitals and what the effects of opening schools may have on them and, and, and the community as a whole, and balancing that against the da, the damage that not opening schools does, which is considerable. And I think when you consider this race, you have to think about who's most prepared to have those discussions, who's done the work, who's thought through the, the, the issues and balanced the trade-offs, who's shown the courage to, to take heat from power when, when power was, was wrong, while also trying to reach out. You know, I think courage matters a lot in, in public life, and so does honesty. I was elected in 2016, telling you that, telling you, are you cutting me off or do I keep?
30 seconds.
Okay, sorry. I was elected in 2016, telling, telling, telling you that I was going to fight for the humanity of kids in a system that thinks of them as test scores only, that I was going to fight to preserve and, and, and strengthen the teaching profession, and that I was going to bring the public closer to its public education system. And I've absolutely done those three things. I did exactly what I told you I was going to, going to do. And there are very few politicians who can say, say, say that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. So far, we're, working as planned, we hope. So these next questions will be, first one will go to Billy. You'll have about a minute and 30 to answer, and I'll wave my hand again in 30 seconds, Billy. So the question is, opinion or concerns with the superintendent retiring in a couple of months? Billy, you're up first, then followed by Will.
Well, I think, I mean, I think the, she's earned the right to do what's right for her fam, her family. I, I want to work with who wants to be, to be, to be here. I don't have any, any problem with her deciding to retire. You know, I, it's, it's, it just kind of is what it is. I, I like what the superintendent has done in building bridges with other institutions. She's very good, I think, in, 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 in public life. I think she had some struggles with organizational management that I tried to help her with. I tried to make her better with constructive oversight, and I think all that was a work in progress. I certainly didn't ask her to, to retire, but I support her decision to do it. And, you know, we'll, we'll move forward from here. I don't think we need to bring in, I mean, you know, we're, we're going to do a national search, most likely, but I also think stability is important, and I would, I would, I would be happy to, to, to look internally as well.
Sounds good. Thank you. Will, you're up. Your question was opinion or comment about the superintendent retiring?
Absolutely. This should be the prominent conversation happening right now. If we look back at Billy's record before he was elected in 2016, he's tried to hide those writings, but I've discovered them. And he was, he had a disdain for Jacqueline Byrd even before being elected. So here's his statement. Now that they have appointed Jacqueline Byrd superintendent, they have no real power, knowledge, and horsepower. So to me, that sets the stage for the way that he's leading and creating this dysfunction for her as our leader and moving forward our clear strategic plan. So I think the dysfunction of the board, that's our biggest problem. If I was to look at the stats currently on who our superintendent is, we've got 26% that are female in our nation, and we have a female leader. I would say that we're a nationwide trendsetter. 3.3% African-American, that's a trend. I mean, that's a huge trend. So for the fact that she strategically placed two letters out there for us to know that situation, we should be aware of that and recognize that. So I think my opponent's mistreatment of her is unacceptable.
All right. Well, we will keep it on.
Can I, can I, can I address that, I guess? I mean, or do you want to give a? Just, just ask, just ask, ask your next question, question, and I'll answer that in the next.
The next question would be, what, what are you looking for or what difference, if there is anything in a superintendent? Whoops, sorry about that. My phone is winning. Okay, hold on. Okay. The next question would be started by Will, and the question would be, what do you want in the next superintendent different than perhaps you saw in Dr. Byrd?
93% of superintendents say that they have a collaborative relationship with the school board. Again, that is not the case with our board, so it's a clear, you know, it's clear that, you know, my opponent has created this dysfunctional environment. You know, I think my main initiative, if elected, would be to ask her to extend her contract. So did you hear that? That's my main initiative. Now, if, you know, things don't move that direction, I think we need to have somebody that's just as supportive and present that she has been. So, you know, I, I've been receiving so many personal responses in regards to the situation, individuals that have been 21 years in our district and this nice element of support that she's given her. So, or, you know, so when I think about the future, yeah, we want somebody that's supportive and present, but also that somebody that can distribute resources equitable and, you know, with fairness across. Because for me, I want access to the length, the same learning experiences across the board. So I think that's pretty important. The other thing that I'm noticing as well, to make sure that we have clear vision for effective personnel. She's a key role in determining the dispersment of personnel. So when we think about effectiveness and community partnerships and things like that, we want an individual that can do that well, can see team building as strategic as we place admins in leading our schools around the district. So that's what I see as the, really, the two main important ones.
Billy, you're up, and what do you want to see in the next superintendent? Perhaps what you didn't see?
Well, well, let, well, well, let me, let me address what Will, Will said first. First of all, I don't, I don't hide writings, as, as, as you guys know. Actually, Jackie Byrd became superintendent because I led the movement to remove Kathleen Roy, who had embarrassed us and done a lot of damage to the, to the board. Tim Harris and the elected school board at the time moved to hire the superintendent, Mrs. Byrd at that time, without any consultation with the public as a whole, and I was critical of the board's move on that. But the actual piece that I wrote at the time was, give Jackie Byrd a chance, give Tim Harris hell. That was the actual headline of it. I, I remember it. So, you know, it's just false to, to say that I was somehow hostile to her from the beginning. In fact, I was meeting with her when she was the, the interim. Again, this is a serious time, and we can't afford people who are going to lie so casually. Your parents want to know the truth from us, teachers want to know the truth from us. The, let me, also, let me read what superintendent actually, actually said in, in her, her retirement, retirement letter. It was sent in late May. It said, lately, however, some board, board members have either acted or attempted to act in ways that materially blur the respective roles and responsibilities of the school board. She couldn't possibly have been talking about me. There was no conflict going on at the time. In fact, I had praised her on her handling of COVID up until that time, generally. I asked her in public to clarify what the examples were. She wouldn't give any. I asked her to say who the board members were. She wouldn't say. I just, at some point, I have to worry about the public as a whole, the kids we serve, this drama as to whether she will go or whether she will not is just small compared to what we're facing right now. And, you know, I'm very happy with the leadership we're getting from our task force right now. I think Michelle Talley and John Dunhill, who, who are, are, are leaders, kind of stepping in there and, and working with Superintendent Byrd, I think are doing a nice job in a pretty impossible situ, situation. And I want to be as helpful and supportive to them as I can. And, you know, I, I, again, Polk County and this organization has become a very complex place. I think it would be helpful.
Stop right there.
Okay, sure.
You know, the, the next question from Billy, and it's one that just became, I think, relevant, very relevant yesterday. Do you see the district actually being able to open, and, and what needs to happen between now and then for it to actually open?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think the debate on opening schools has kind of been backwards. I, I wanted from the beginning for us to have a voluntary sense of who wanted to come into the schools and who was willing to teach. I'm not willing to coerce anyone into a physical school in the middle of a pandemic. And this is where these questions of authority are really important. It's not clear to me that I have that say, or the superintendent has that say, or the state has that say. I think it's all going to be battled out legally to, to some, to some, to some degree. I think it's important for us to tell, to look everybody in the eye and tell them the truth and say, it's not going to be safe. I mean, there's not safety. The question becomes, you know, I, I would like, particularly in the younger grades, to provide in-person instruction around reading and, and have the kids have the ability to see, see each other and play outside and all that. But that has to be governed, and it has to be voluntary. We can't coerce teachers and staff into it. I think circumstances are such that we're probably heading toward not opening on August 10th. We have a plan to be able to do it, but I, I think forces that are greater than us are probably going to, going to short, short-circuit that, but, but we'll have to see. We're going to, we're going to discuss this on Tuesday in, in greater, greater depth. But, you know, my, my big thing is, is not to coerce anybody. We should be a resource to the community, a resource to our, our, our people, not an artificial authority to our people.
Thank you. Will, what do you see about the district opening or being able to open, and comments about it?
Yeah, great. I just want to go back. I did share a link from the Web Wayback Machine that took screenshots of his previous writings that were covered up with the Lakeland Local. Maybe I'll, I'm using that word loosely, but if you try to actually access the URL to that writing, it is not there, but you can follow that link, and I can send other links too. I don't take this lightly. I spent two years researching him as my opponent, as I was pondering with my wife whether to run for this position. So you have that there. I would love for you to look at that, to reinforce what my statement was earlier. Now, moving forward in regard, in regards to the COVID situation, I mean, there's so much research out there right now that we're trying to track and follow. I know as a researcher, I mean, it is heavy, heavy on my heart, for sure. But, you know, we could look at, say, there's a meta-analysis that I just recently read that, you know, has basically grouping of 45 different studies. These would be peer-reviewed studies, that basically children accounted for 1% to 5% of all cases, and they have milder disease than adults, and deaths have been extremely rare. The American Academy of Pediatrics just had a current release on this statement as well. So the evidence, you know, and just the less likely to become infected is there. The question for me is, can we really have a utopian society without sickness? The answer is no, and it does seem like that's what we're pushing for, and we can't, you know? So, you know, for me, in, in potentially serving this role, we need to consider what policies we can put in place to offer accommodations at multiple levels and keep, you know, safety at the forefront. That's huge for our parents. Now, in that, you know, discussion.
We don't got that job.
Yep, okay, great.
You get to answer the next question, though, because it ties to that to some degrees. You're next up, and says, what is your plan if this, if the school district does not open up?
Yeah, so if it doesn't open up, we have big issues from a financial standpoint, and that's definitely at the forefront of my, my thinking as well. So let's just say if we did even have a hybrid or, you know, a mutual between online e-learning and face-to-face. If we completely extract face-to-face, we're going to have a dire crisis from a budgetary standpoint. I think there's already going to be one as we think about the options in regards to virtual. So if you notice, a lot of the messaging right now has been focused on Polk Virtual and Tethering Option. So, you know, parents are actually considering that Florida Virtual as well. Florida Virtual is probably more developed than our Polk Virtual, and then obviously the Tethering, we're doing a lot of development on that right now. We've got a lot of work there. But let's just say we had 20% of students that chose to go Florida Virtual. I mean, we're talking huge, 20,000 students. What would that budgetary look like? Well over $150 million in state allocation that we're losing to our brick and mortar, because the Florida Virtual is a different district. So I'm thinking about that, but I'm also thinking about student success. How are we developing within the Polk Virtual and the Tethering that's going to protect student success?
Okay, thank you. Don't want to cut you off because you had another 20 seconds to go. Okay. Billy, you got the same question. What, what is your plan or ideas of the district?
Right, right. I mean, what, what, what the, what the task force has come, 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 come up with is a five-day in-person option, which will, which will require masks. It's, it's important that everybody understand that. The tether option, and what that, that is, is the ability to take online learning through your school as opposed to Polk Vir, Virtual or Florida Vir, Virtual. When, when the district first rolled out its choices, the only two choices were in-person and Polk Vir, Virtual or Florida Vir, Virtual. And thanks, I think, in large part to my advocacy and, and others. I mean, I coined the term tether, so I'm, I'm pretty flattered that Will, Will is, is using it. I appreciate that. You know, what we heard, what, what I heard over and over again from the public is that they wanted to stay connected to their brick and mortar community, but they wanted the option to, to, to not have to fully attend or to, to be able to move back and forth. And that's what the tether option allows conceptually. I happen to think that's probably where most people are going to start, and frankly, the tether option's pretty close to what we were doing at the end of the year la, last, last year. I think the reason for that is, you know, to say we want a utopian society of health, and that's like, the polls are, are not utopian society of health on one side and 100-year pandemic on the other, you know, like, like the, no, nobody's talking about a utopian society of health. We're talking about how do we kill the fewest people? How do we protect our hospitals? How do we protect our teachers, our staff, who are going to have to be in there every day? How do, how do, how do, how do we protect our kids? And those are very deep, difficult, conflicting, hard discussions, and you have to have thought about it a lot, and you have to be willing to, to make hard calls. And, you know, I'm willing to do both.
Next question. We're going to do the next question. This is one to Billy, and it gets to the financing of the campaign. What major groups are supporting you and why? And we start with Billy and then go to Will.
About, I, I, I have one major donor who, who, who has a lot of LLCs. It's a Gregory, Gregory, Fan, 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 Fanjelli, who's a friend, and who, like me, I think, you know, we come from very different points of view, see the world in different ways, but I think we both think leadership means more, it should, 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 should be greater than a, than a small club. So that's, that's, that's my only really big donor. The rest of it is almost entirely small, small donors, its parents, its teachers. I mean, I'm certainly heavily supported by, by teachers, by, by, by the people who do the work every day in our, in our, in our schools. I think if you look at the small dollar donations in the last couple of months, you'll, you'll see they're, they're spectacular. I'm very proud of that. We have a very populist-driven campaign. It's, it's built around the people who do the work, and they are willing to contribute to me because I listen to, to them, because I take them ser, seriously. Many of them are currently putting up memes and endorsements of me that talk about what I've meant to them and how no one has listened, listened to them like this in 30 years. And I'm proud, proud of that. And, you know, I'm, I'm proud of all of my donations.
Okay, thank you. And Will, the same question. What major groups are supporting you, and if there's a why?
Sure. So, you know, the Leadership Club that is supporting my campaign started with Ashley Troutman and myself, and he was the first person that I verbalized my interest in serving in this role outside of my, my home and my family. So he's probably the, the deep-rooted connection and friendship, and then that's built in a very grassroots-oriented way to then connect with and formulate what my opponent calls the Leadership Club, which is probably the most extensive and diverse host list of contributors within the county. And it, it's not just Lakeland. It's extremely broad and representative of business leaders, nonprofit sector, trades, individuals, elected officials, previously elected officials. So I'm, I'm pretty happy to say that it started with two and then built from there with a great vision and a great message.
Great, wow. You guys are being good with your time. Thank you, makes it much easier. Will, you get the first closing statement. My question is why you, and if you could use this for the next minute and a half? Oh, let's go two minutes. Two minutes on, on why you in a closing, has a closing statement.
Yeah. You know, I'm definitely deep-rooted into Polk County, and I recognize those values. Student success has been dear to me and seeing education as a pillar of hope, because it was for me as well. So I know that we need a stable, unifying voice. The state's not our enemy. School choice is not the enemy. I'm the experienced educator. I'm not the sociological critic, and that is me. So if voters look closely, they'll see that, and, you know, I've built a broad base of support. They can choose stability, positivity, a vision over pessimism, choose experience and practice rather than that lens. So I've committed to preparing that whole student, and I'm ready to bring that, and I've pledged to work with our leaders to bring this improvement and a move forward with the district.
All right. And then Billy, you're up. You got two minutes to kill.
Well, you know, you see me in action. I've been effective. I have changed, I have transformed the Polk County School Board into a force for, for good, where it was passive and, and quiet and hidden. We have engaged the public in a way the public's never been engaged before. When the state government, who is supposedly not our enemy, threatened to fire 1,600 of our, our teachers for a work stoppage that did not exist, only one leader stood up for them. That was me. Superintendent didn't stand up for them. No one in Leadership Club stood up for, 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 for them, but I did. I took all the heat, and the state backed down because, you know, that, that was important. And the consequence of that was that Melanie Bell went into one of her, her meetings and said, the governor should remove me from office just because I exist. Again, again, I've stood up to power. I've, I, I've stood up to people who want to do things the same way they've always been done, because we can do things much better, because I think kids are human beings, not to, not, not test, test scores. And, you know, I, I make no apologies for that. I've done everything I told you I was going to do. And in this era, when our decisions truly are life and death, I think you want somebody who's honest, who's not, who's not knowledgeable, who will listen, who has relationships with the people who are going to die, the ones who are on the ground. That's, that's me. I am the voice of the people who do the work, and those people have been ignored by Leadership Club forever. I don't have any problem with, 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 with those guys. I've reached out to them over and over and over again. I want to win them over, but I think first, we have to demonstrate that, that they need to take us all ser, seriously. So thanks.
Well, gentlemen, we appreciate your time today. Brian has some people maybe who left questions. I appreciate the fact you've been very open and very communicative with me and making sure that this happens, and I appreciate your willingness to work because the technology obviously beats me to death all the time. Thank you very much. Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, yeah. I want, it's six minutes till one. I said, you know, we would probably run long. If people need, if people need to leave, that's fine, the meeting. We do need to wrap it up by 1:15 because we got to turn the Zoom platform over to somebody else who needs it. Before I start taking any questions, I want to say both to Billy and William, both you, both of you, thank you very much for, just for sticking your neck out and agreeing. Billy for agreeing to serve, William agreeing to run to serve. I've done it in the past. I know it's not easy. It's a hard thing to do. I get it. And so I appreciate your, I appreciate you willing to serve. And so with that, do we have any questions from the audience? Anybody out there? I know we do. Somebody, somebody speak up.
I, I just put one in the chat, but I'll ask it aloud if, if you want me to, Brian.
Go ahead, Adam.
My question is, just recently, the state removed significant funding for the, the schools. As we face this pandemic and greater need for funding, what is? schools. As we face this pandemic and a greater need for funding, what is both candidates' opinion on that money being taken from the local budget?
Billy, you want to go first?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll take that. I, I, I think what Adam's referring to there is, is the $400 million, million dollars that the state took from local districts because of actuarial concerns about the Florida pension fund. In Polk County, that was $9 million in recurring money just ta- taken away. That is money that could be used for, for safety, for, for PPE, for all the things we're going to have to do to have any, any kind of, of opening. And to me, it shows the state's not really serious. The, the flip side of that is the big teacher raise, which cannot, which is what's called a categorical. It's, it's set off to the side. It can't be used for anything but ra- but raises. And it's targeted for teachers who don't exist. So people we, we, we haven't hired yet, got a very big raise. And the people who are going to be on the front lines, who are, are the people, are the people most at, at risk, they got essentially nothing. And on, to add insult to injury, we took, the state took $9 million away from us that we could use to protect them. And I would hope that my opponent would, would agree that the state should give that money back. I mean, if, 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 if we're going to open schools, I mean, I, this seems like a common sense thing that he and I can agree on. And, and, and I hope he will. Because I mean, I, I think if we had a united voice, we'd have a good chance of getting that money back.
All right, William, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah. As, as a teacher, I think we should honor our veteran teachers. I think there's dialogue that, you know, I'm not believing that in the context of what just happened. I do think, you know, we should recognize that the state actually did increase the FTE, which is the full-time equivalent funding for our students, per student. So that's a great thing. So I do recognize the complexity and I do have empathy in regards to the teacher pay. Now, when it comes to the word that the opponent uses, the FRS heist, I call it the FRS preservation. So when we can use that language, we can really consider what's happening is when the actuary came through, it's there to protect our bond rating. Though, you know, and this is something that we, you know, when I connect with our director, former budget director, Jason, you know, he's, he's noting that we're preparing for those each year and that increase, but this one happened to be a little bit higher. But that's a state initiative to make sure that they're protecting the retirement fund for our state employees. So if we don't see it that way as preserving and taking care of our veteran teachers, I think we do have a different opinion on how that's being preserved or being heisted.
Okay. Shirley Baylog, I see you got your hand up.
Yes. I would like to know from both of them, what they see as the future for education for individuals with disabilities. I know there's going to be a lot of financial crunch going forward and they always seem to be left behind. So more now than ever, they're going to need that support. So I'd like to know what their, what their take is on the future of that education part.
All right, William, would you like to answer first, please?
Yeah, great question, Shirley. Our youngest, we're at McKeel, by the way, is our, our school of choice. We did wait four years to, to lock in that, which is a problem. But our youngest is on an IEP currently in regards to speech. So we're, we're aware of that and the complexity of that and the need to continue to fund that. I thought the district did a good job of bringing a consultant in. The report was just put up within the last couple of weeks. And I'd like to spend a little bit more time around that. I know I do have some ESE questions to work through this weekend. But, you know, I think for me, my personal initiative is to make sure that we have equitable access to learning experiences across the board. So with that, I can definitely value this conversation, having a child, a lot of personal IEP, and seeing the complexity of even gaining that within McKeel is a challenge as well. So I see the limitations there for sure.
All right, Billy?
Well, a couple of things there. I, I, I too am supportive of the report. And I think that's another example of the effectiveness that I brought. And in conjunction with, with new board, board members, Lisa Miller and Sarah, Sarah Fortney, in, in 2018, we pushed very, very, very hard for better services for, for ESE, more humane services. That report is a direct result of the intensity of focus that we brought and, and the humane focus that we brought. So I'm, I'm pleased that my opponent's pleased with it. Also, that's, that's a, I, I appreciate him sharing the, 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 the IEP question of speech. You know, as you guys know, I have a speech problem myself. And, you know, I think that's, it's, it's, it's always good for us to remember our shared humanity. I think McKeel sometimes, and, and we're getting better on this, McKeel and some of the, and certainly some of our magnet schools as well, have not been as friendly to ESE kids as they ought to be. Our traditional zone schools bear the brunt of, of the ESE burden and, and, and responsibility. And we've been trying to work on that. One of the, the most important, frankly, the most important thing for, for the future of ESE is getting the federal government to fund what it's supposed to fund, which it never has. The, the, the law IDEA is what it's called, has never been, it's, it's the federal law that essentially creates IEPs. And it's never been funded at anywhere approaching the level. It's supposed to be funded, funded at states and, and, and local districts are left to fend for themselves. We're at a really fundamental mo- moment in funding and resources for education as a whole. And the federal government's going to have to spend a lot more money to, to sustain what we're already doing because the states have balanced budget requirements and, and the COVID depress, depression is going to hammer our ability to provide resources. So it's, it's, it's really a gut check time for everybody. That future is challenging if we don't commit the resources to it.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions? I'm seeing my, with their hand raised. Any questions? Anybody want to speak up? Well, if we don't have any questions, I want to say thank you, Billy, and thank you, William. Thank you both coming on today. I really believe that we, we have, we have a large club, having an educated club, which means being able to bring people on. If here is your, both of your ideas, it's very important to our, our club, important to the community as a whole. So thank you both for being here, taking your time, sharing your ideas about how to move forward with the school board. I can tell everyone that we are, that we did record this. I know there were probably some people who tried to get into the meeting if you get in. I will get the link to the recording out to everyone so people can watch it if they want to go back and watch. And with that, is there anything, any announcements for the duty club before we close the meeting? Anyone? Last chance. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.